One, welcome all. We're going to start our informal session. We have a bit of a news story that's been circulating. We're going to ask the city attorney just for a short synopsis, and we're going to be talking about it in a closed light later. But just for now, if you could just give a quick overview of what's going on. And then after some short, within the reasonable time, we're going to get a published.
All right, Mr. Mayor. As many of you know, I think I sent a memo to the council yesterday. Yesterday, the circuit court conducted a hearing in the Branch et al. versus City of Virginia Beach case. This is the case that challenges the redistricting ordinance passed by this council in the fall of 2023, which embedded the 10-1 voting system that had been previously been ordered by the federal district court. The plaintiffs in that case contend that the redistricting ordinance was invalid by virtue of Dillan's rule and that the city was not entitled to eliminate the three at-large seats that remain after the House Ball 2198 changed the charter in 2021. The court after hearing argument granted summary judgment in favor of the plaintiffs, concluding that, in fact, the city did not have the authority to eliminate the three at-large seats and has deferred any action or remedy in the case until after the referendum election in November. The court did make it plain that it concluded that the 2022 and 2024 council elections were still valid. That is to say that everyone sitting around this table was validly elected. But unless the charter is changed, it would be the state court's view or the trial court's view in state court that the city would have to revert to the 731 election system. Of course, we also know that the federal trial court judge has reopened the former Holloway case, and we are waiting to see what future developments may occur in that case. As the federal court has indicated, a firm belief that the 10-1 system is the only system that is permissible under federal law. So more to come. We will talk to the council in closed session about possible next steps, and we will advise the public as events develop.
And, you know, thank you, Mark. And, you know, say, this has been a very complicated process for a number of years now. And a lot of the things that happened to us were things that, you know, were quite frankly imposed upon us. And once again, you know, we're going to come to, you know, we're going to come to a thing, a conclusion on this. But once again, it was a very tortuous journey for all of us and, you know, a lot of moving parts. But, you know, as always, we will prevail. Thank you, Mark. Really appreciate it. Alfred.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, your first review provided by Sabrina Davis.
Avis, Director of Reset Inc. She will provide you an update on the programs and services provided by Reset to residents. This time we'll be joined by Sabrina Davis.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for having me this afternoon. Do you already have them?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me this afternoon.
This should be.
Yes. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, I am Sabrina Davis, the founder of Reset Inc. Reset Inc. is located in the trifecta of Chesapeake, Norfolk, and Virginia Beach. As I continue to present some of the slides that will be seen and visible upon the screen, we'll show some of the programs that we actually offer at Reset Inc. Reset Inc. stands for Restructuring, Education, Social Development, and Economics Together. We're a nonprofit organization that was founded in 2023. We offer a variety of different programs. Our leadership team, it is entailed of Black, Indigenous, people of color that actually volunteer and run the nonprofit organization. We don't just want to be a handout. We want to uplift. We want to provide resources to our underserved communities with essential resources. Your brand, your collaboration, your support matters. From our city officials to state to federal, we need the support of everyone in the community to continue to provide resources to the communities that we serve. Some of the programs that Reset Inc. offers are youth outreach and tutoring, community outreach and engagement. We have an annual back-to-school event. Last year, we supplied over 150 children with coats, backpacks, school supplies, clothes, shoes, undergarments. Last year, we also did a Feed the Need distribution where we provided over 100 families complete baskets for Thanksgiving. And on Thanksgiving Day, we fed over 100 individuals food. In addition to that, one of our largest initiatives, which is what has grown our nonprofit's presence, is our 24/7 food pantry that is available 24 hours, seven days a week, that is outside, monitored by surveillance. There is a refrigeration and a freezer component both outside. There are shelves where the five staple categories of food can be found. It is an opportunity for the working poor, the homeless, those that have short-term needs or long-term needs to actually come and get food if they're in need. In addition to that, excuse me, we also have our annual Christmas brunch, which is going on its third year, which this year we anticipate over 200 children that we will provide for with brunch, toys, clothes, shoes, photos with Santa, as well as some celebrity appearances. As we continue to expand support and services, we want to continue to grow the 24/7 food pantry, which we just recently launched a home delivery service. And we started that around the 19th of June. And to date, we've had 20 deliveries. 10 of the 20 were to Virginia Beach residents in the ZIP codes of 23451, 23452, 23454, and 23462, where we provide delivery service based on registration to those who cannot get to the pantry to get the food. We actually deliver it through volunteers. We have a weekly diaper distribution because we are a diaper bank partner. So every Thursday between the hours of 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., families in need are able to get 50 diapers per child for free each month. In addition to that, we also offer supportive services such as behavioral health resources, crisis relief by way of some of our local community partners that we are associated and affiliated with. So as you can see here, we have several partners. The Southeastern Virginia Food Bank, USDA, the Hampton Roads Diaper Banks. We are Operation Warmth Partners. We are partners with Toys for Tots, and we are partners with Centerra Health Plans, just to name a few of our valued partnerships. And as you can see here, I am Sabrina Davis, the founder. I am a resident of Hampton Roads, grown and born here. Military dependence, I was a Navy brat. Former federal government employee, federal government contractor. In addition to that, I obtained my master's degree from Liberty University, my undergrad from Chaplain University, and my associate's from Strayer University. And so through some of my experiences, community service, and background, that is what enables me to be the founder and executive director of Reset Inc. And why does Reset Inc. matter? The direct impact, it addresses food insecurity, the youth development and economic challenges. We're community-centered. We do not discriminate on who we help based on what city they come from. Because as we all know, a stomach is hungry, and it doesn't matter what city that is located in. Hunger does not begin at a specific time of the day or night. So that is why I made the decision, which was unorthodox, to do a 24/7 food pantry, something that no other organization offers in Hampton Roads for various reasons. But for me, I understand the parent that gets off work and needs to grab a meal for their kid, or the homeless person that comes out at dusk and needs to grab something to eat, or a weekend when a family needs food to get them through the weekend, or simply someone who needs something to survive through their next payday. And so that is one of the key components and reasons why I decided to do a 24/7 pantry. As of today, these numbers may just be a little bit off because we've had at least three weeks from the time that this was created. But from 2023 to now, we've actually distributed over 380,000 pounds of food in over 15,000 individual impact. We have a strong presence across Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, Norfolk, and Portsmouth. We have an active social media with a following that's growing. Population breakdown shows the percentages of the individuals that we serve based on the city, with Chesapeake being 42%. Then we have Virginia Beach, as you can see, is 33%. Norfolk at 15, and we have Portsmouth at 10%. Why is our 24/7 pantry a vital resource? It eliminates hunger. It's emergency food access beyond traditional hours. It promotes health and well-being, reduces homelessness-related hunger. It builds trust within Virginia and within North Carolina and surrounding areas. But most importantly, there has been a reduction in crime. People don't have to steal food if it's offered for free. And some of the local businesses that surround our location has actually given us that feedback that they have had a reduction in theft as a result of us having this 24/7 food pantry available. Innovation and community value. We have a community-first design. Our goal is to serve the communities that need us the most. We're a trusted partner. We're developing relationships with city partners, corporate partners, and volunteers within the community. The struggle of what's going on in these communities is not just an organization, city, or state struggle. It is a community struggle, which means as we grow and evolve, the community needs to also grow and evolve with us. And so we encourage participation from the communities that we serve. We encourage self-sufficiency. We provide job resources. We offer trainings. We have a computer lab to offer resources for them. We have a shower in our facility where crisis, emergency situations, if someone has a need to come in and take a shower, we have that ability to allow them to come in, allow them to shower. We have a media room where we have the at-risk youth that we mentor. They can record TikToks. They can do Zumba. They can do karaoke. We really are more of an outreach center versus just being a simple food pantry. So as we look at our growth strategy, we want to expand into new cities across Virginia, develop partnerships with local and state governments, utilize feedback for improved service delivery, and build a model of community self-sufficiency. We have not relied on federal, state, or city funding for the nonprofit as of this point. What we have done is we have utilized many of the fundraising efforts that we've done on our own. I write majority of our grants, and so therefore, a lot of the funding has come from grant writing. In addition to that, I have reached out to organizations, community partners. I'm a retail rescue partner. I am a USDA agency, as well as a food bank partner, to make sure I can continue to feed these. The feeding the constituents of your city is just a small portion. But as we continue to grow, we want to continue to feed beyond what we're doing now. A lot of cities have food deserts. The, one of the major deterrents for people getting access to food is that grocery stores are not within a certain mile radius of them or they don't have transportation. Transportation barriers is a problem, which is why we incorporated the mobile delivery service to those who cannot get to us. In addition to that, you know, there's programs that have relied on funding and have lost it. For instance, Meal 757, the loss of funding means they can't provide this service. And so what happens is the pushback from that is Reset Inc. is now hit harder with the need of citizens that have requests for food. And so with that being said, as being a self-starter, in my mind, I said, okay, we have to find another way. We need to do food drives. We need to reach out to our cities and say, listen, this is what we're doing. And I've been doing this for 12 months, funding it without the support of any cities. But we want sustainability, and we want to continue to make sure that we're providing food as medicine. We're keeping our citizens safe, and we're keeping our youth engaged in activities beyond crime. Right now, one of our fundraising efforts is our 24/7 food pantry vehicle. Two weeks ago, Reset Inc. picked up 4,600 pounds of food. Well, I don't know if any of you know what 4,600 pounds of food looks like, but a Dodge Grand Caravan cannot hold 4,600 pounds of food. So what that means is when we pick up food to this capacity, we're renting U-Hauls, which is a cost, not a high cost, but you pay for miles, you pay for the rental of the U-Haul, and then you also pay for fuel. But that money could be used somewhere else. The refrigerated vehicle becomes an asset to the nonprofit, but it also enables us to transport food at a larger volume, climate-controlled, and also go into neighborhoods that are in need and are vulnerable to actually set up and say, you know, we're at this location in Virginia Beach. If you're able to get here by way of Medicaid vans or transportation services to meet us at this particular location, or if we can go into certain communities, then we can actually take the food to these communities and have the ability to transport the food as well. What a partnership with Reset. This is, this is kind of primarily what it would look like. Community impact is measurable and growing. Feels essential services and gaps with flexibility, ready to collaborate and scale with proven leadership and accountability. So when I leave here today, if the city of Virginia Beach does not support Reset Inc., Reset Inc. will still continue to serve the constituents of Virginia Beach and all the other surrounding cities. Will the support help? Absolutely. But if I walk away and you do not support, we're still going to continue to feed the communities that we fed thus far. Here's my contact information, our website for your review. You can also find it in the packets that are in front of you. So I will open it up for any questions and answers at this point.
Okay, Rosemary.
It's very impressive that you, you reach so many areas of real people's needs. Very impressed. Where, where is your office and facility located where people can go get your help?
So we are located at the trifecta point. So we're one block from Auburn Drive. So if you're on South Military Highway, and if you're familiar with the largest Dollar Tree in Hampton Roads, we are in a private parking lot sitting directly beside it. So across the street from us is a Sit Go gas station. So it's 1109 South Military Highway. But if you go up a block, then you're at Auburn Drive, which is Virginia Beach.
And how do you get your funding?
I write my own grants. We do our own fundraising. We do, we just did a Stanley Cup fundraiser. We, we do different baskets. I do have some sponsors that actually, on a monthly basis, they've already set it up so automatically they donate to our organization every month. We do different campaigns such as GoFundMe. And when we have our different huge events, like the back-to-school event and the Christmas event, where we actually have, you know, I'm constantly on my page. So I do my own marketing, I'm a public creations, I'm the grant writer. I do a lot of things on my own, but right now. And what we, and we also have a board, and the money that is paid by our board members also helps sustain us as well.
And how many paid employees are there? And how, how many volunteers do you have?
We do not have any paid employees.
Doing this all volunteer?
Yes, ma'am. Now, we do have a roster of about 25 dependable volunteers. We have different people that sign up for different organizations based on events and things that we have going on. And so we, we can rely on them. But on a regular basis, those of us, it's about 25 of us, yes, ma'am.
Want to congratulate you for all the, and thinking outside of the box with some of your ideas.
Thank you.
Cash.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, for your presentation. Really appreciate it. You caught my attention last year. And I noticed when I was campaigning, you got more likes than me. So I was like, who is this? That's really what made me look at your organization. And then we met up and said, let's do a tour. That was on a Sunday.
Yes.
I came on a Sunday, I did the tour, and I thought, well, she's in Chesapeake, so there's really no reason for me to go because that's Chesapeake. But I walked across the street from Auburn Drive, across the street. Then while I'm there, on a Sunday, I noticed residents from Virginia Beach coming over. Hey, Councilman, how are you doing? Right? So you already had built a connection with District 7, some of the residents of District 7, which was amazing to me right before my eyes. And so after the, the tour, I said, we need to get the word out. I mean, one thing about me, Cash Green, is I'm a megaphone, right? I want to make sure that people know that you are not just providing a essential service of food, but you're also a safety net to crime, a deterrent in crime. And so you can look at College Park. You can look at Chief Hutch is in District 1. You can look at our numbers and go, okay, we've been pretty quiet. And a part of that, I'm going to say, is because your organization exists as a beacon of light. I thought it was important to bring it to council's attention because if, if there's some way somehow that we have resources that can aid in keeping this program alive and well, I think we need to consider it, right? And so one of the things about reaching out of the box is the 24/7 operation that you perform. Why the refrigerator? Why the deep freezer 24/7? I mean, where did that come from?
So one of the things that I noticed when I initially started the food pantry was small. I kind of did it as a pilot program, much like the mobile delivery service. And I said, well, let me just see. And so we started off small. We would have non-perishables. And I would set them out on a shelf. And I had a lady approach me one day, and she said, you need help with those boxes. And I said, well, yes, ma'am. I said, well, listen, if you ever have a need, there are some items there. It may not be a lot. But there are some non-perishable foods that you may need that may tie you over. And she said, well, yes, ma'am, I know because I've been eating off of your hummus and your persil chips for the last two days. I'm homeless. And I stopped, you know, Councilman, and I looked at her. And I thought to myself, when I initially did this, I just was doing it to make sure that there wasn't a need for food and people couldn't access it. I just, for me, I think about the single parents that have the kids. They come home from work, the kids are hungry, they need something to eat. They have no money. Or like I explained to several of the followers on my social media posts, the last week in the first month is the hardest time for families. Senior citizens, their benefits have not yet begun, or they just paid rent and they have no extra money. Or, let's, let's be honest, SNAP, EBT benefits, don't post except for the 1st of the 7th. And depending on your case number determines when you get those benefits on your card. My research in this has went a little bit deeper because I've also looked at the amount that residents and individuals receive in benefits. But I also looked at the component of transportation is a barrier. So they're taking their benefits and they're saying, I'm going to use Instacart. I'm going to use DoorDash, okay? Not many people know this, but I'm going to explain it to you today. There is a difference in the cost which you pay for the food getting it through these delivery services. They're not all in-store prices. Food Lion is one of the few and only grocery chain in Hampton Roads that I know of that has in-store prices on these apps, which means if you go anywhere else, Walmart, et cetera, to shop, you're paying a higher cost. Now, you add a delivery service charge onto that. Now, depending on what the difference in the cost is, your benefits are not going to last you the entire month. Now, I get it. It's business, right? But a lot of people don't even pay attention to that, or they feel like there's no option outside of getting this because they cannot get to the store or get to the five staple categories of food that they need.
Thank you. I mean, very well laid-out presentation. I immediately got on the social media network and began to rally up the troops and get you volunteers because you have been a one-person band. And I would say, if anyone is listening, if you have the opportunity to visit Reset Inc., go down there, volunteer. It is an amazing organization. But it's not just servicing District 7. It's also District 1. It's not just that. It's the surrounding cities. Thank you. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And then Mary.
So, Ms. Davis, that was a really good presentation. And obviously, your breadth of knowledge is really high. So that's a wonderful, it's great to have you in that spot. It really is. Couple, three things that, one is, Councilman Green just kind of hit on it, is you struck me as, and, you know, get a little bit of joking as far as how the, the fire department and all that is, those stations right there, you have three different cities. You have three different stations within a couple of miles. And like you said about the hunger, a fire doesn't care what city it's in. You know what I mean, and all that? So having the, I just want the closest truck because I happen to have family that lives in all three cities right at the border. You know what I mean? I would rather, I just want to get them there. So kind of the same thing you're saying about the hunger is that's a perfect spot. As, as y'all don't know, the really a good marker for you is College Park Shopping Center, just across the street. That'd give you the, I know you were trying to dial it in, but that gives them a general idea of where we're talking about. So I think that's a great spot to be able to help. With that, that's what I would say is, is one thing, I appreciate your growth strategy, like, wow, this is really impressive. But I'm not supporting the, the new city, you know, and Virginia. Just stick with us at home. Just take care of us. We'll let the others worry about the rest.
That's right.
My personal opinion. Because you've got three, three different cities there that you could be working with, which also could help maybe with some dollars. So I hope we're not the only presentation. You know what I mean? That would be another thing. Then I would ask, lastly, from this, from the manager, the COG grant, you know, I've been through this once now. So I'm just trying to figure out exactly how to do this. Is that the best process for this? And how, what would you suggest at this point? And, and maybe she's already done that. I don't know.
And I don't know if Ms. Davis has done that yet, but we actually just announced today that the COG grants are open for applications. And I just clarified with staff that she would be ineligible.
Look at me. Man, hit it right on the head. How about that?
Yeah, so Ms. Davis, we'll get some information about that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, but, but hey, I really wish you well with all this. And we'll plan on helping you from, from District 1 and District 7. You're right, I mean, you're literally right there at the border.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
And Mary.
Thank you again, Ms. Davis, for your presentation and also how well you've been working. In fact, as I was coming this way, I saw one of those mobile trucks. Market trucks are there because there's one in District 4 with Mount, the Mount at Virginia Beach.
Yes.
So maybe connecting, that networking will help you.
Yes, ma'am.
Right on Baker and Newtown. They have that, and they're connected, just like you are, with Food Bank. Because that is important. I'm glad you put Food Bank on here because a lot of times, people say they get all this food and do not give the credit to Food Bank and USDA. They are not doing it alone.
That's right.
It was good to see you acknowledge that they are partners with you. And the last question I wanted to ask you, for 24/7, I'm wondering about, who do you have for security? I mean, if someone comes 11:00 or 12:00 o'clock or 1:00 at night, do you live right near there? Or what support system? There's got to be something.
So we have volunteers that take turns, shifts, monitoring after I leave for the evening. In addition to that, we have security cameras. There's two cameras on the outside of the facility. And they actually talk to me, surprisingly enough. When they come up to the pantry, they'll wave, and I'll get an alert on my phone or on the computer. And they'll say, you know, hey, Ms. Sabrina, you know, I'm stopping by to get food. Or sometimes people will bring food because one of the concepts that we offer is that it's people's choice. Which means when you come to this pantry, you're selecting the food you want to eat. Food that is within your diet, food that you can cook or have the capacity to cook. We're not giving you a box of food that says, okay, you have a need for food, here you go, take it and go. Because what if you don't eat that? What if you have dietary restrictions? What if you do not have the capacity to cook it? Then what? So by us doing that, it is unorthodox, and no, other food pantries, they do not do that. But we have a team of volunteers that they sit in the parking lot, they back in, they just watch, just to make sure that there's not a abuse in the quantity that's taken. There are labels and notes and different things. And honestly speaking, we had maybe the first month or two that we started this pantry, a few abusers. But lately, no, because it's that critical and that important to the community that people understand that you can come in, you can overindulge, but then what does that mean if this goes away? Because right now, we're relying on, you know, donations and fundraising and grants and support from organizations like Food Lion Feeds or the Foundation of the Carolinas to help us continue to fund this.
Knowledge is power, and you have it.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much. And, you know, we often say that the strength of not only Virginia Beach, but this region, are the people that give their time, talent, and treasure to do some remarkable things. And we're known as a caring city and a caring community right here on Hampton Roads. And, you know, it's folks like you that really come to the plate to help out tremendously. And, you know, I'm familiar with your area, because as a former council person for Centerville, which is now District One and Seven, so I'll just say I was with District Seventeen back in the day. But once again, you know, the needs in those two communities are really thing, and it just shows that we're paying attention to people all over the city.
Yes.
So thank you all very, very much. God bless you, and, you know, Godspeed and keep on doing what you're doing.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my apologies.
So Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, this is a follow-up presentation to a request
From City Council back in the spring, where council asks for some impacts regarding free residential parking inside the parking garages. And council asked for a follow-up on terms of a general sense of what would it look like in order to get to a place where we can provide such an opportunity. So LJ Hans is gonna give a briefing on some of the challenges and the scenarios associated with that, and also a concept for council to discuss. Not looking for any direction at this time, but really just giving council some ideas of what it would take, and garner any feedback or guidance you all may want to give.
Thank you, and welcome, and my apologies for the swipe away.
Not at all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Before I begin, I did want to point out that media did a wonderful job on this logo, so you all have something interesting to look at when I'm up here. This afternoon, I'm gonna give a presentation as the manager talked about resort area parking. And before I begin, I did want to point out a couple of notes for staff. Rob Fries, who was the Parking Administrator for the City of Virginia Beach, retired. Yesterday was actually his last official day, although he did take a week of vacation before he left. Rob is with the City of Virginia Beach for 25 years. He was a budget analyst initially, and then moved into the parking management. So that leaves me with, I'm a little, I haven't had parking for a long time, so I'll be honest. I don't know everything, but I did bring two experts in the field with me today. Tavris Parker and Casey Hansford are with us today. So if you have any questions that I don't know the answer to, I'm gonna ask them to come up and give me an assist. But hopefully, we have enough information to give council something to talk about and think about moving forward. And with that, the agenda for today is a little bit of background, talking about free and discount, free and/or discounted residential parking. There are some considerations that go into whether or not something like this is feasible and how it might be implemented. I do have a potential scenario for council to consider. It's not necessarily one that is endorsed by Public Works. We're just throwing it out there as a possibility for how something like that might look. And then hopefully, some matter of discussion for council. Back in February, I delivered a presentation to City Council regarding the Parking Fund and a study that we had done regarding its health and vitality. At that time, we were asked to investigate the potential for free or discounted parking in the resort area for Virginia Beach residents. This, as the manager stated, this presentation is really just for information for council's purposes. We're not expecting you all to make any decisions necessarily today, but rather to give guidance. Just as a little reminder, parking management for the City of Virginia Beach is a professional organization. It is comprised of professionals. A lot of the work is done by contractors, but we do have professional staff that are on board, and that staff is accredited. They manage a very large portfolio with over 17,000 parking spots. You all have heard us talk about the many different parking garages and lots and issues that are associated with it. In addition to the paid parking, we also administer the RPP and a number of other issues as it relates to parking throughout the city. This is the area that we're gonna be talking about today, the resort area. Certainly, council's no stranger to this, but if you look at the map, you can see there is a little bit of a gap there in the middle. This does include the two new garages that'll be going in at the Atlantic Park area, and you'll see a little bit more information about those different garages and how they're structured as I move through the presentation. And lastly, before I begin, I did want to point out a couple of things. There's a reason to parking management. It's not just to be a burden on people that are trying to park. We're trying to provide a valuable service to the residents and to the visitors of our city. And with that, we have some stated goals and objectives. And that is that parking should be easy to find, should be able to find an open space. Once you find that space, and if it's a paid spot, it should be an easy-to-make payment. We'd like for that parking to be close to proximity to destination that you're headed to. That pricing should be fair, and the enforcement should likewise be fair. And most of all, we strive for a positive customer experience, as we do with everything in Virginia Beach. So I do want to talk a little bit about some of the technical issues as it relates to parking. And I hope this first slide is a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but I think some of us tend to think about parking the way that maybe it was when I was a little younger, maybe most of you were a little younger. As I look at, as I put some of the images up here on the slide, it's a lot of very intensive manual purpose that is done in the old days in terms of parking management. You had meters that took coins that had to be emptied on a daily or semi-daily basis. You had personal attendants that sat in booths, you had officers that walked a beat and wrote citations. That is what I think a lot of us tend to think of. And in that scenario, trying to administer some type of a discount would be different than the way that we do parking management today. So this is actually the entrance to the new parking garage at Atlantic Park. This is the garage we call the Baltic Garage. It is open for business. And one of the things that I want to point out is, when you pull into the garage, there's no gate. There's no arm that comes down, there's no person sitting in a booth. You drive into the garage, this is gateless technology. But the little red circle there indicates the camera that hangs down. And when you pull in, it records your license plate number. And that's how we can tell when you enter the garage, by your license plate number. When you find a parking spot and you get out and you go to the elevator, there are ways for you to pay to park. Now, this is for what a guest would expect to see. Somebody who hasn't been in the program, or hasn't been necessarily involved in a lot of parking, you don't have your own particular parking app. If you're a first-time visitor, you would walk up, and this happens to be right next to the elevator in Atlantic Park. You scan the QR code with your phone, it brings up a screen that looks just like that. This is actually a screen grab that I took from that QR code. It took no time at all. And one of the things that's identified in that is your license plate number. Because everything that we're doing in this gateless technology is tied to your vehicle, and your vehicle's identification is your license plate. And so you put your license plate number in, you put your cell number in, and then you move on to payment. And then you can select your payment choices from there. The cell phone information is to let you know when you're drawing close to the end of the term that you've paid for. And then, the other thing that I have to mention is the myriad of ways that you could pay. Now, I indicated in the orange slide there, on the orange signs, if you're not at all familiar with our program, and that's how you choose to pay, that's certainly a very easy way. But there are a lot of people that have apps that they already have, and they don't want to have two or three or four or five or six different apps. So the City of Virginia Beach is very accommodating. We have a myriad of ways to pay. There's text to pay, there is passport parking, there's a couple of different types of meters, and there are even still coin-op meters in the city. The reason I point that out is, all of this is a way to make parking convenient for our guests. We want it to be convenient for them. But it does introduce a lot of different scenarios for us in terms of how that payment is received. And that can create some problems if we're talking about having a discount. So, that's how you get into the garage. How do we enforce parking? This is one of our parking enforcement vehicles. It's driven by our contractor. And we have the same vehicles, you'll see them at Town Center, but this one actually happens to be taken at Rudy Loop. And if you'll notice on the top, it has two little license plate readers. And so what happens is, they will drive up and down the parking lot aisles, or they'll drive through the parking garage, and the license plate reader is reading off the license plate. And as it goes along, it's determining whether or not that license plate is tied to a valid fare. Did you pay? Right? Do you have a permit? Depending upon the myriad of different ways that you may have been registered to be in that garage, in that parking spot, it's making sure that you're supposed to be there and that you've paid. If you haven't paid, that's when you're gonna get a citation. Now, with that technology, though, there are some other things that kind of make it a little bit tricky. So garages at Atlantic Park, 25th Street and 31st Street, we all have contracts with outside agencies to reserve spots for them. So that creates an additional challenge, because they don't pay through the same system. They have a permit, so that goes through a different program. That means that when the license plate reader is driving up and down the aisle, it has to look and see whether you've paid in this format, this format, this format, this format, this format, this format, or if you have a permit. And the computers can get confused, it happens. There's just a lot of different things that are at play there. It's a technical challenge. We have inquired as to whether or not parking management would be able to have access to DMV records. We found that we were able to have limited access to DMV records, but not enough to determine personal data. And that's probably a good thing. Parking management doesn't have the ability to access your names and addresses. We can see what city that the license plate is registered, but that doesn't actually work for our purposes, because, and I'll show you why here in just a minute, there's a number of ways that that can be misleading. All of that being said is, the number of ways to pay and the inability to decipher residency easily means that we would probably have to have some type of a pre-registration tied to a license plate if we wish to move forward with discounted or free or discounted parking. Of course, I have to talk about the impacts to the Parking Fund as well. In February, when I came, I pointed out that the Parking Fund is an enterprise fund. And I don't think that necessarily all of the people that are watching this understand what an enterprise fund is from government standpoint. But that does require that the parking operation generates sufficient revenue to support its own operations. That means it has to take in at least as much money as it needs to operate. Parking management is not supported by the real estate taxes or by personal property taxes. It's not generally fund-supported. The Parking Fund does not generate extra revenue that goes to support the city's general funds. So we don't use the Parking Fund as a means of generating revenue for the city. It simply exists so that we can provide parking to our residents in the different areas. And the revenue itself that's generated is used for operating. That's paying for the city's professional staff and for our contract staff, for cleaning, maintaining the garages. And then there's a part that needs to be reserved for what we call capital expenses, and I'll talk about that here on the next slide. Over the last, I think, seven years, you can see that on average, operating revenue is about $6.26 million. This is a little bit hard to calculate, because of course, you have the pandemic years that are in there. It's why we have a little bit bigger window, but it does vary a little bit. The other thing that's included in this is, with the creation of Atlantic Park, we took two large parking lots offline, so it does kind of fluctuate a little bit. But still, we think the averages are pretty close. $6.26 million in operating revenue and $5.48 million in expenses. Now, when you first look at that, you would say, well, it looks like you're generating about 3/4 of a million dollars in profit. That's not correct, because it doesn't include our capital maintenance. And that capital maintenance, that 3/4 of a million dollars, we roll that back into capital maintenance. And that's things like elevators. Every time we have to replace an elevator, it costs a little over a million dollars. If we have to replace, do significant maintenance on a parking structure, whether there's a lot of concrete, rebar, steel, we're working under pre-stressed concrete conditions, that gets very expensive. And so that's where that extra 3/4 of a million dollars goes into our capital fund reserve, and it allows us to continue to maintain the garages. Our current fee structure is structured like you see on the screen here. In general, the hourly rates are $2 an hour. We have a couple of specific parking lots, specifically in the Sandbridge, Croatan, and Little Island Park that are paid for by the day. But everything else is paid for at $2 an hour. There are a couple of max out-of-pockets of $20. There are some parking lots that are free from November to March, but in general, it's about $2 an hour. We do have dynamic pricing that exists as well, and council approved this a couple of years ago. This is for weekends where we have significant amount of folks that are traveling down to the resort area. This upcoming weekend is a really good example. Fourth of July weekend is going to be very crowded at the oceanfront, but we will have dynamic parking that's in place. Actually, for the next several weekends, we have dynamic parking that's in place. Monday through Friday, with the exception of Fourth of July, you'll be paying the regular rate. But on the weekends, there's just a fixed rate, and that schedule is located online, and you can see it here on the screen. And these dates correspond to activity dates that are on the calendar. And I do want to point out that this schedule is subject to change. Sometimes people will look at it and say, hey, that date wasn't there, but a new schedule date popped up because of something that's happening at Convention Center or the resort area, and so it does change over the course of the year. So with all the information I just gave you, what does that mean in terms of the Parking Fund? In February, I presented this slide to you. This is our projected expenses for the next several years. Year one, 2025, which is the year that just concluded yesterday, was the last year that we had debt service to pay out of the Parking Fund. And I believe that was for the 31st Street Garage. Ninth Street Garage, thank you. Ninth Street Garage. That, so we no longer have debt service to pay. Moving forward is strictly operations, maintenance, and capital maintenance. The fund sensitivity analysis that we did showed that at $2 an hour, our existing rate, even though it hasn't changed for many years, if we carried that rate forward, it would sustain us through the next several years. The sensitivity analysis shows that it still falls within that window. We feel confident that we could hold it for at least another two or three years. However, if we change and we go to a discounted rate for citizens, that rate, that model, would no longer apply. How we would be impacted is a little bit difficult to tell. We've looked at a couple of different ways of looking at it, and they don't come back with a real good conclusive result. with a real good conclusive result. Our employee pass program shows that 90% of the employees that are in that program are Virginia Beach residents, which means potentially that they could swap from doing the employee pass to doing some other combination of taking, you know, free parking. And of course, that would depend upon how we structured that program. A sample data from July of 2024, we picked a couple of garages, not across the whole system, but a couple of garages. What we found was that those that are guests, our guests are transient guests, average stays about 2.45 hours. Employees that were registered in the program stayed on average about seven to eight hours. And residents that are contracts, as I mentioned, we have contracts with some people, stay on average about 16 hours. So how that would play out, understanding that there are elements of Virginia Beach residents that exist in each one of these different categories, makes it really hard for us to come up with a mathematical calculation for what we would see. But we know that any discounted program would have a significant impact to the parking fund. For one, we would reduce the amount of revenue that we would collect and it would require additional city staff to implement. As I pointed out, we'd have to have some type of registration that would require additional city staff, so it would increase the cost. The parking rate would therefore have to be adjusted to cover the shortfall. That would be the parking rate for everybody that wasn't getting it for free would have to go up. As I mentioned, it's difficult to figure out exactly how much that is, but we estimate between $3 and $5 an hour would be the likely new rate required to maintain the fund. There were a couple of other things that I thought would be important for council to understand as we move forward. And then I have a scenario that we put together and certainly council can consider that. Any type of a discounted program would not be able to be implemented for on-street parking. And the reason for that is, if you recall, when I showed you how that camera works when you go into the garage, we don't have a camera for every spot on street, therefore, we couldn't determine when you got there, how long you stayed. So it would not be able to be implemented for on-street parking. And likewise, we would not be able to implement it on days where dynamic pricing was in place. One, it wouldn't really be. It would be counterintuitive to what we're trying to do with a dynamic pricing, but the other thing is just that the sheer volume and the number of people would make that incredibly problematic. Parking management staff would also have to have a little bit of guidance from city council if council's decision is to move forward with this. For instance, what's a resident? That seems like an easy enough question until you start digging into what it is that we're looking at. There are some residents that pay real estate tax and there are some that don't pay real estate tax. There are some that pay personal property tax and some that don't pay personal property tax because we have different types of programs to assist different people. So real estate and/or personal property tax would need to be considered. We have folks that live in our city that are military, their vehicles are registered out of state, some of them own property, some of them don't own property. We have vehicles registered in the city that are commercial, but they may live in another city. So that, all of those things tend to make it a little bit more complicated and it's not impossible to solve. We just need to figure out, should council want to move forward this way, what are the boundaries so that we're clear and that we can communicate that clearly with those that are applying for the program? And then, of course, we'd need to consider what council would permit for duration of stay. If you wanted to have all day, two hours, three hours, four hours, what would be an acceptable, appropriate amount of time? Longer durations, more inclusions of what's considered a resident would likely require higher parking rates to maintain viability of the parking fund. Remember, I said somewhere between $3 and $5. That's really going to depend upon how many people we let park for free and how long we let them park for free. And then lastly, I did just want to point out that there are a couple of things that we would like council to understand is that the requirement for pre-registration will likely create some customer service issues. There will be folks that have heard that there's free parking and they will show up and they will have not pre-registered and it will not be available to them. And so we just want to make sure that we'll try and do our best to get that information out there, but there will be some customer service concerns and that's one of the reasons why we also believe that we would need additional staff member. And then additional pressure on the garages could increase the number of peak pricing days. If we run into more days where we have full garages, then we would have to consider dynamic pricing on a few more days of the year. Having said that, we did put together a potential scenario for council's consideration. In our scenario that we put together, residents could register online by supplying a copy of the real estate or personal property tax bill. That would mean it would be personal property tax or real estate payers and/or, I guess I should say, because often, most of our residents pay both, and a copy of the vehicle's registration. We need a copy of the vehicle's registration so that we can link that vehicle to the person that's actually paying the personal property or the real estate tax. And then periodic renewals would be required. In our scenario, we specified three hours of parking would be free for registered residents, excluding on-street and dynamic pricing days, as I mentioned. The hourly rate across the board would be proposed to be raised to $4 an hour. And with this potential scenario, we would consider the need probably for one or two additional staff members to assist with registration and for customer service issues as this new program came onboard. The adjusted fee structure would look just like this. We're not proposing any changes to the daily rates for the Croatan, Little Island, or the Sandbridge lots because their fee structure is different, but we would propose changing the rate from $2 an hour to $4 an hour for the garages and lots that were identified. And that's what I brought for you this afternoon to kind of kick off a discussion and I'm certainly available for any questions, comments, considerations.
Hey, way to kick off the nude logo. All right. Okay, Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Hassan. For diving into this more deeply because there is a need out there in the public for this to create more business at the oceanfront and to help our citizens. I like what I see so far. I would like for this to be socialized with the public, with stakeholders, with residents, with various committees to get their feedback, the business, the oceanfront businesses, of course, as well, but I don't have any questions or issues, really.
Okay, Rosemary? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Stacy jabbing her hand up.
There you go. So just an idea. The idea to provide free parking for residents is to increase their ability to use the businesses at the oceanfront, which they wouldn't be doing every single day. It would be on a limited basis. Maybe they want to go have dinner or go to the beach for a few hours during the season. So would it be possible to structure the program to where someone would register for a coupon under that enter your promo code? And all they would have to do is go through the same scenario, entering their coupon number, and they would get X number of hours, if it was two, three hours. And then that would be limited on a yearly basis. That would greatly cut down on the amount of free parking that would be supplied.
So the coupon would come before you went to dinner? How would you get the coupon? I'm trying to think through this. How would you get?
You'd go online, you would apply, you'd enter in your registration number or your address, and you would get a promo code that you would enter in here.
So you would still have, you would still have to go through the process, right, of providing your real estate bill or your personal property tax bill?
Yeah.
And your registration? So you would still do the registration, but you would only be limited to a certain number of?
Hours per year.
Hours per year?
My credit.
Yeah.
I can investigate that, sir. I hadn't considered that.
So if I know if I'm going down, if I'm going out to dinner tonight, I want to go down Saturday night to eat at a downtown restaurant, I would go to the app, put in my information, or I'd have it entered one time and then I'd want to get so many credits? I could just go right to the app, get it, get my promo code, put it in? Simple. And then that way, you're not giving an unending amount of free parking to all the residents in the entire city with an unknown quantity. You would have a known quantity and you'd know when they're going to be used. And you could limit it to not doing the dynamic pricing hours or weekends or whatever you wanted to limit it to would be much easier to do.
Yes, sir. They're writing it down.
Okay.
Good idea. Okay, we're going to go Rosemary.
Well, this is something that would benefit everybody's district. You know, everybody to be able to come down to the oceanfront and have some free parking. And I know this is really complicated and that y'all had to put a lot of thought into it, especially, I struggle with all the, the old fangled gadgets of parking is kind of what I understand, so it does make it a lot more complicated and I really appreciate you doing that. I think it has a lot of merit, I really do. Whether we have, whether you limit it with so many, like Stacy's talking about, or just sometimes you make things too complicated. And have people know that they register and you opt in, that message has got to be put out there, you have to opt in and register. I think we used to also use driver's license. Is that a possibility to use that as a means of identification?
So, the issue with the driver's license is that it doesn't tie to the license plate of the car. Again, remember, our enforcement mechanism is tied to the license plate of the car. The driver's license used to work when there was a person sitting at the booth or manning the gate and you could hand that person and then they would punch in a code, but if there's nobody there, that's not how it works. So right now, there are a couple of, I think we have a couple of lots that you can call after a certain hour. You have to call a phone number and you have to tell them some information. That would be incredibly time-consuming and problematic if you were trying to do that on any kind of scale. But that's why we can't just use a license, a driver's license, because the driver's license in and of itself doesn't tie to the vehicle, which is the license plate number. That's the only way that our reader can identify it.
So you really couldn't use your real estate bill? You'd have to really use your registration.
You need the registration and then, so the registration identifies that your vehicle was, your registration just shows that's the license plate number, but we have people that move into and out of the city rather regularly, so that's why we would tie it to the personal property tax or the real estate bill.
But I know that this had a lot of legs on social media where people really felt that, you know, they live here, they pay taxes and they'd like to have some kind of benefit. Of course, we do it at Town Center, we get free parking there, but we wanted to come down to the oceanfront too and spend money in the businesses and the restaurants. So I think this has a lot of merit and it'd be really nice to, like Worth said, to air it out to the public.
Josh, oh, wait, Patrick and Josh.
Mr. Mayor, the issue that we're going to have, like me with, that's not for the credit, is that we're going to ask the software developer, because it's not our product, right? But they're probably, what we've been trying to do is try to create a system that can work with the system that we have, right? The software developer is going to have to determine if it's something that they can make a modification for, right? So if we answer that question and the software developer says that it's not something that they can do without a significant increase in cost or something like that, we'll communicate that back to council. And in general, if council's supportive of this, I was trying to get some general guidance and feedback on what timeline council would possibly want for us to evaluate this or communicate it with the public. So actually, I'll make a discussion, Mayor, before you wrap up this discussion. That's something that I'd like to get some feedback. Is this like you want us to do a roadshow for a couple of months and then come back to you all, like in September, October? Don't need to answer now because I did step in front of Mr. Schuman. I think he has some questions as well.
Thank you, Elsie, for the presentation. Can you remind me, I know there's on this sheet here, we've got, this is slide 26, with the fee schedule. Where at the resort and when is it already free for everybody? So isn't there a period of time that it's?
Just on-street?
On-street.
Just on-street during the winter months is the?
So November to March. Okay. And?
Excuse me.
Free parking.
Tavris, you need to come up here, please.
Rudy as well.
I told you, I told you that I was going to get tripped up. There's a lot of special nuances in our parking program and I want to make sure that Tavris gets it right. Thank you.
Free parking.
Available year-round at the Rudy Loop area on-street till 10 o'clock.
Year-round.
And then that's year-round, but then all the time after November. But then Croatan also until 10 o'clock AM.
Okay.
That's right.
And I remember, I remember the posts on social media, people talking about it and having their big community dialogue around it. Just me, maybe I don't, maybe I don't live and understand the resort parking challenges in the same kind of way that you all do since those are the constituents you're from. I personally, I mean, this is just me, I think our rates are affordable and I do understand the desire to make sure that residents feel that they can have greater access to going to the beach and visiting our resort and make it more accessible for everybody. If we could do something in line of, you know, with what you suggested so that it doesn't stress the parking enterprise fund too terribly, and I think, I mean, that sounds perfectly fine. I know that, and none of these are, so this only applies to parking at the resort, right? So the parking areas in other districts, there would be no rate adjustments to the extent the rates are charged at those locations, correct?
So we don't, we don't have fee-based parking in any of the other districts?
We do. Well, they have a boat ramp.
It's not, it's not in the parking enterprise fund.
No, it's not. It's Parks and Recreation.
Kidney movers and skis.
Boy, you really are.
So that's in Parks and Rec.
So there's, so there's no other places in the city where we charge for parking that, well, San bridge.
That's a big broad statement.
That's what he's thinking he's trying to say is.
Well, tricky.
That's again, in the parking enterprise fund that a parking enterprise fund manages, this is what we are pretty certain. Well, you know, Parks and Rec manages theirs a little differently.
Okay. I mean, I just, I want, I mean, we, and I'm sure you probably share some of the concerns in District A, but I mean, in our part of town, the parking issues are not garage-related, they're neighborhood and beach-going related, yeah. So we've got certainly different kinds of challenges, but as long as this doesn't upset the apple cart and you can figure out a way to make this work and have the fund be sustainable into the future, why wouldn't we show our residents a little bit of a break if and where we can? We just got to be responsible about it.
Okay, Patrick. And again, I think council understands that if we were to bring this forward, we would also be bringing forward a companion to increase the rates from $2 to $4. I do think ultimately, as we talk about the need to enhance our parking availability and parking infrastructure over there as well, there has been some conversation amongst staff and the council that the parking enterprise fund may need to start to become a place where it's taking on a little bit more of a share on debt service for parking garages because currently, right now, it usually, how it works is the tip or the general fund contributes to construction and then operations and maintenance goes. As we try to bring more and more parking online due to our needs and demands at the resort area, this $4 rate may need to be looked at to go somewhere to five or six or something different than that to accommodate all of these parking needs. It's a moving target, right? Because as we also said, council has expressed the openness to starting a charge for parking in the Convention Center area, sports center area, which may create additional capacity, right? But it's just being eyes wide open that the $4 hit, right, may possibly sustain, but as we think about bringing on more robust parking infrastructure, we may need to look at this periodically on an annual basis.
Okay. Anyone else at this point?
You know, I think, you know, we've got to remember the ultimate goal is to get residents to the oceanfront. You know, I think that, you know, that if we keep. You know, I think that, you know, that if we keep that focus, you know, that'll be helpful. I kind of like Stacy's idea a little bit, because, you know, once again, you know, if you have that type of thing, how do people find out what, when the dynamic pricing goes into effect? You know, they think they might be able to get to the beach, but, you know, things may not be apply or anything, but if you go through that type of thing, oh, today's a dynamic pricing time, and you could actually have them, you know, printed, things about that. You know, that's the only real, you know, challenge that I see going forward. How many, about how many dynamic pricing days do you have?
On our current schedule, I think there's 38.
38.
Yes.
You know, but once again, you got to get that disseminated to the public. But otherwise, I think the idea has merit, and, you know, I think it warrant further discussion. I think, you know, Patrick made a valid point about, you know, maybe charging at the convention center and stuff. We have obligations to build garages. I think we all do that. I mean, Stacy noted that, you know, a couple of months ago. You know, and that's our primary thing. Let's see how it shakes out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have the last question.
Okay, let's go into council comments. Anybody? Stacy Cash.
A few moments. I had a civic league meeting with the Kings, the good folks at Kings Grant last Thursday, and the president of the association shared with me some information, shared with everyone that was there, some information, and I thought council would find fascinating, as I did. And I'd like to share it with you. It's going to take a few minutes. I'll read it off, but I think you'll find it's worth the effort. Jeremiah Denton Jr. was a native of Alabama. He graduated with the wartime accelerated class of 1947 from the U.S. Naval Academy in June 1946. He later earned his wings as a naval aviator. In September 1961, he joined Attack Squadron 42, based at the Naval Air Station Oceano. His family became the original residents of the new Kings Grant community. In July 1965, Denton's AS6 Intruder, based at Oceano, was shot down on a mission while leading a bombing raid of 28 jets over North Vietnam after launching from the deck of the USS Independence stationed in the Tonkin Gulf. He was held captive for seven years and seven months in Hanoi, during which he endured repeated and prolonged torture, as well as solitary confinement for four years, two of which were in the notorious prison camp Alcatraz. While a prisoner, he was leader of other POWs and defied his captors' efforts to use him for propaganda purposes. In one such propaganda attempt, when asked what he thought of the Vietnam War, he replied, "Whatever the position of my government is, I support it fully. I am a member of that government. It is my job to support it, and I will as long as I live." While making this statement, he was also blinking the word torture in Morse code over and over, confirming for the first time to the American government that the POWs were in fact being tortured. Upon release at the end of the war in 1973, he was the first to step off the plane at Clark Air Force Base in the Philippines. Denton spoke briefly on the tarmac as he stepped onto free soil and was speaking on behalf of the prisoners. He expressed their pride for having had the opportunity to serve the country under difficult circumstances, and their gratitude to the President and the nation for having secured their freedom under honorable circumstances, ending spontaneously with the words, "God bless America," and a crisp salute to the flag in the transfixing display of patriotism that brought tears to the eyes of an entire nation. He returned to Hampton Roads and was treated at Portsmouth Naval Hospital. He subsequently became commandant of the Armed Forces Staff College in Norfolk, Virginia, and thereafter retired from the Navy in 1977. He was awarded the Navy League of the United States John Paul Jones Award for inspirational leadership and cited as fellow as follows. For his magnificent courage and leadership while imprisoned by the North Vietnamese and was a symbol that demonstrated both military and civilian POWs during their years of incarceration under the most difficult and trying conditions. He later returned to his native Alabama and served one term as a U.S. Senator. When he died in 2014, his memorial service was held in Kings Grant. He is buried at Arlington. His wife Jane Dutton was a tireless advocate of prisoners of war. She helped found the nationally-recognized advocacy group, National League of Families of Prisoners of War and Missing in Action, in the 1960s after her husband was captured and imprisoned during the Vietnam War. Her efforts were credited for helping to obtain humane treatment and the ultimate release of American prisoners. His awards, presented in the shadow box pictured below, include the Navy Cross Silver Star, three awards, Bronze Star, five awards, Defense Distinguished Service Medal, Navy Distinguished Service Medal, Purple Heart, two awards, Distinguished Flying Cross, Air Medal, two awards, numerous other service and campaign awards. The shadow box was presented to him upon retirement and displayed at his son's Virginia Beach Law Office. The USS Jeremiah Dutton was christened at a building yard in Pensacola, Mississippi on June 28, 2025. It is expected to be commissioned to the Navy service in 2027. The ship is a guided missile destroyer. I was, for those of us that are old enough to remember, you know, I was a child back then, but I do remember Jeremiah Dunn's service and the return of the POWs, and I still picture the film of him using the Morse code for torture. You know, I know that we've, in the past, we've recognized families and distinguished citizens of our community, and I would like to see if we couldn't honor Jeremiah Dutton and the Kings Grant community, some sort of recognition.
Yeah, I think we can definitely do that. Thank you for that.
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we are definitely proud of our military and all the sacrifices. You know, we are steep with history right here. And, you know, like I said, the military is part of our DNA, and, you know, we got to recognize that. Thank you for that. Okay. Anybody else, Cash?
Yes, this past Saturday, this past weekend, grateful to see at City View Park, I mean, for the first time. District 7 is reflective of cultural arts, and so I did a lot of posting on Facebook and Instagram. If you get an opportunity, go by, visit City View Park. That's, as you're going to Tallwood High School, on the right side, you're going to see this beautiful sculpture. You'll see a gecko, then you'll see a lily plant, right? And so the paint is, that they use is this sort of tech paint, where when you touch it, it can be beaming hot outside, but it's, it's cool to the touch or relatively warm. And so there was a lot of hard work before my time as a council guy, but I want to give credit to who credit needs to be, and Director Kirschman, and his team, and Culture Affairs. I'm thankful that they've given District 7, and the rest, Virginia Beach as a whole, these creative artistic masterpieces in our parks, revitalizing our city parks for our future, for our kids. So when you get a chance, visit City View Park and see the work that has been done. It took three years to get this beautiful sculpture, and please, if you get a chance, the vibe even came down. So we were connected with the vibe. And lastly, but not least, Parks After Dark. As you know, College Park Elementary, that's where we're doing Parks After Dark from July till August. We are building with families. I think we had every night 50-ish plus families, right, Tangela? She's in the audience. And so we're beginning to spread the word to the families. Parks After Dark, it happens in Jennifer Rouse's district, my district, also in Williams'. Is that your district?
Dr. Rossam.
Oh, Dr. Rossam, right. Yes, the doctor, Councilwoman, Dr. Rossam's district. I mean, they are the starters of it, so when you see their numbers, they've got some big numbers, yes. It's very impressive. Anyway, everyone, it's something for everyone, not just for District 7, it's something for everyone. And so please, when you get a chance, make sure, visit. It doesn't have to be just for the kids. It's family-oriented. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, it starts at 6 o'clock. Now, the end time says 11, but it starts to fizz out a little bit about 9:30. But anyway, go out and visit it. We had Rouge, the artistic band, or they, they are very, was it classical jazz or just sultry music? They had live music, and it was at Parks After Dark, in our Parks After Dark. So when you get a chance, visit Parks After Dark, all three locations, from 6 to 9, or 6 to 11, you will not be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia.
Well, we don't need anyone else to talk about communication for these three. Thank you so much.
What we have here is a terrible community.
Okay. I do want to mention, as you know, I'm on the Virginia Town and City, the Virginia Municipal League, as one of the board of directors. I'm so proud to mention that we, as a city, was in here. We have Elizabeth Estripic received the 2025 A. Robert Chirren Award from former colleagues, Rebecca D. Cuban, City of Virginia Beach Deputy Assistant Attorney, and Mark D. Stiles, City of Virginia Beach City Attorney, during the Local Government Attorneys of Virginia's Incorporated 2025 Spring Conference in Charlottesville. I think they need a round.
Okay, anybody else at this point?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to let the community know, particularly along the Bayfront, that on July 16, from 6:30 to 8, we will have a community meeting about some of the challenges that we've been experiencing at the Lynn Haven Boat Ramp. That has been an issue I've brought around the table before, just to kind of give you a heads up about. It's just a challenge. It's a, it's a facility that has a long history of being open 24/7 through 65. There's a lot of different user groups, and it's smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood that already has parking challenges. Some of the congregating at night has turned into, you know, some of the activity that I know you've been seeing, Councilwoman, at Freedom Wash, and I know that we've got maybe a half a dozen of these kind of places in our city where people congregate and misbehave. But sometimes they congregate and they don't misbehave, you know? And I think we just need to obviously be aware of that, too. But anyway, July 16, from 6:30 to 8, at Shelton Park Elementary, we wanted to make sure that we had an appropriate space to accommodate folks from, you know, parking perspective, and then the, you know, the size of our, you know, expected audience. So the purpose of the meeting will be to deliver some updates, you know, just to educate everybody about some of the facility operations, to let everybody know what measures have been taken to mitigate some of these issues over the last two and a half years, and then to, you know, seek input and discuss with, with anybody who'd like to attend, some ideas on the way forward. If you happen to be listening and you are part of the, part of a night fishing community, people who depend on using that facility at night to go launch and fish, we would really benefit from having your input in the room during the meetings.
Patrick.
Jennifer. Jennifer, I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Schulman said. I just want to acknowledge that council has been intentional for the past several years in helping us to provide additional enhancements for public safety in the parks. We're starting to see some concerning issues, and the council's definitely stepped up. So one of the incidents that happened over at Lynn Haven Boat Ramp, there was a shooting there overnight, a couple of weeks ago. We're thinking there's a, there's probably a need to evolve some of our public safety posture there as well. So we're going to be talking about some things, and eventually, we're going to have to come back to this council, this body, kind of talk about some ideas that we're probably going to need some support on in terms of our ability to enhance our public safety posture, not just in the Lynn Haven Boat Ramp, but also in other parks in the city as well. But just nothing, no decision needed by now, but just letting you all know that we're probably going to have to come back and briefly to council about some next, needed next steps.
Good, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. Then, thinking about council member Schulman's comments, I'm curious whether the July 1st change about reckless driving that went into effect across Virginia, so like reckless driving endangerment, whether or not that has any implications in Virginia Beach. So in terms of if it changes at all any of the enforcement that police are doing with like drag racing, because that's a big issue on, I'm sure, all over, particularly on Holland and Independence, just like all night, just hear speeding vehicles. So I know that it's an issue that's been brought forward for many councils to try to figure out, but I just was reading that, and I don't know if there is any, if it changes anything that the police are doing or can do. So that's just kind of a question I'd like more information on.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, my office and Mark's office will sit down and talk to the police department, and then we'll communicate out something as it relates to any changes in our posture or if it's, or any next steps we need on council as relates to that item.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. DeHane, if I can impose upon you, we had some good news from Wallet Hub in a survey, and then you also mentioned Chief Nutigate had a, told you some really good news about public safety, where we rank nationally, if you would be so kind.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you know, Wallet Hub, they produce every year ranking of the top 100 cities in terms of management. The city was number nine in the entire nation in terms of best managed cities, and number two overall in quality of service and service overall delivered to our residents. So that's terrific news. And also Chief-
That's a tribute to you and your staff.
Yeah, thank you very much. And also, Chief Nutigate reported that Virginia Beach, over 148 cities in the major cities chiefs jurisdiction, ranked number two in terms of safest cities in the entire United States. So definitely, Virginia Beach continues to be the benchmark and lead the way in the entire nation. So thank you, that's definitely a lot dealing with the policies and the support and the resources the city council provides us. So thank you all for your support.
Okay, I think we're ready for agenda review.
Under ordinance, is anybody wants to pause? Is everybody okay with going on consent? Because we have open mic.
Just a point of clarification in order on the public hearing tonight on number one. We'll proceed with that public hearing, but I'm going to ask colleagues to support a deferral on a vote on number one, if that's going to be scheduled in a week or two. And this is in response to some public requests that we work with a developer on trying to incorporate the existing former telephone building, a library on 22nd Street. This is a public hearing number one, and I've talked to owner developer, proposed owner developer, and they're willing to sit down with the staff and talk this out like we've done before, but maybe look at it a little bit further, and then come back maybe the next, probably not this month, but in the first session in August, and have either another public hearing on a revised proposal or vote. I mean, I don't know the protocol on public hearing and the-
The public hearing is advertised for tonight and a vote next week on the 8, so I believe.
Correct, City Clerk. You're correct, City Clerk.
So I would think you probably need to, well, I'm not attorney, don't hold all the evidence.
Well, I think Mr. Remick just said he'd ask to have it deferred when it comes back up next week. Well, I, I, I think Mr. Remick just said he'd ask to have it deferred when it comes back up next week. And at that point, it'll be deferred to whatever date you would recommend.
We can put that on the agenda as well. If I have a date certain, we can put it on the agenda for next week.
So bring it up next week?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, if you could let me know, now, we can add-
We can have it listed as up for deferral. It just needs to show up on the agenda because it's previously been-
We'll do the agenda tomorrow. You let us know.
Okay.
I think the first meeting in August is August 12.
Right. That would be my preference.
Okay.
Okay, great. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of open meeting law by section 2.237 A. Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes: Legal matters, consultations with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters, regarding the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to section 2.237 11A 3. Virginia Beach legal matters, consultation with legal counseling, briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to the actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to section 2.237 11A 7. And that would be Atlantic Park, it would be Branch et al. versus City of Virginia Beach, and Holloway et al. versus City of Virginia Beach, publicly held property. Discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect a bargaining position or the negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to section 2.237 11A 3. And that would be District Two, another one in District Two, and District Nine. And then personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline or resignation for specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to section 2.237 11A 1. And that's council appointments of boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. And, uh, council appointee of the commission. So I have a motion. So move to second.
Councilor Malucci.
Aye.
Councilor Covington.
Aye.
Councilor Henry.
Aye.
Councilor Hachison.
Aye.
Councilor Jackson Green.
Aye.
Councilor Rehmert.
Uh.
Councilor Ralph Hamon.
Aye.
Councilor Ralph.
Aye.
Councilor Schuman.
Aye.
Governor Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Dodd.